Okay, well, I'm gonna start. I hope more people will be joining us as we go along. Just for some background, Livermore Advocates for Public Education is a progressive grassroots organization that supports public education. We started as a committee of Livermore indivisible, then grew to the point that we needed to be a separate organization. We are an unincorporated association headed by a steering committee, and we meet at least monthly, but more often if needed. Our goal is to support the board, admins, teachers, and students by combating misinformation and advocating for diversity, equity, and inclusion in our policies and programs. So this afternoon, we're going to start by asking our endorsed candidates Tara Boyce and Christian Vandenhoofel to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about their background and why they feel they would be of value to the board. So to get started, Tara, would you like to go first?
You're muted. I'm muted, yep. So everybody can check that off their bingo. Okay, so as Joanne said, I'm Tara Boyce. I am running for the school board for the first time. I'm a mama of two youngsters at Junction K through eight who are just starting their school journey. They're in kindergarten and second grade. Originally born and raised right outside Scranton, Pennsylvania. I was raised blue collar family. My great grandparents were coal miners who immigrated into the country. So we kind of stayed around the small towns outside of Scranton, raised in the public schools. And then I was educated for university in the same location. I have undergrads in economics and political science. I moved on to a career in finance, picked up an MBA while I was working in finance. Then 2007, I moved out to California and I merged my career with technology. So I've been working in the finance technology space since 2007, have had a variety of positions in the Bay Area and San Francisco. And now I currently run my own consulting firm in the space of solution architectures. And my clients are primarily in the nonprofit educational space. The one you might know of is I'm currently consulting for the Foundation of California Community Colleges and learning a ton about what our community colleges have to offer. So how does that fit into the school board? So I think one of the most important pieces of being on the school board is helping the superintendent creatively solve for issues that are current in the school district and proactively planning for issues that may be coming down the pipe. So I'm excited to use my skills both in the solution architecture world as well as the finance world to dig into those issues. I, because I'm so new into the school district, I have not served on any committees within the schools, but I've worked very closely with my older child's teachers and administrators to solution for some of the, the issues he was having in first and now going into second grade. So that's my direct experience with the schools for right now, but I'm excited to listen and learn. And it's been so awesome just meeting parents, meeting families, you know, with kids in high school, kids just starting out everywhere in the middle to find out what's going on in our district. And now here's Christian.
Thank you, Tara. This is terrible to follow that up. You are so damn qualified. Hello, everybody. My name is Christian and hey, LAPE, I'm so honored to get your endorsement and your support. I think it's, it's really cool. I married into a long line of teachers and principals and assistant principals and athletic directors and all that. It seems like everybody on my wife's side is in that kind of a role. I am a native of the Netherlands and I moved here to the United States on a whim, just kind of for fun, back when I was 20 years old and never left. I ended up attending college on the East Coast, coming to, back to the West Coast every summer to work at a kids camp. So I was in charge of teaching eight to 12 year olds and really, really enjoyed that because I'm kind of an eighth grader at heart always. And I've tried to keep that, that spirit a little bit. I met my wife after I got a job here in Castro Valley. And in 2001, I got a job at the church next to Costco. It actually wasn't there. That was Hot Shots, for anybody who remembers Hot Shots, but a church here in Livermore 23 years ago. And so my wife and I moved out here 10 years ago and enrolled our kids, of course, in our public education schools. And I have loved getting involved right away. And I think my pragmatic wanting to sit at the table with anybody who who needs to be heard, who needs to be listened to, and coming to compromise is something that was just, that it's just a value for my family growing up. And I think it may have been baked into the being Dutch. It's a lot of people in a very small country that all need to get along and share resources. And so I've learned that from the very beginning of my life to always look for ways where we overlap or where we can agree and where we can move policy to the, to impact the most people in our population and also make sure that none of the marginalized groups get, get hurt in it. So that's what I, I think I would bring both the English learner part. And you know, not, you may not, you know, think of it now, but I did not really speak English. Actually, I didn't begin to do that all 20, when I was 20 years old, but I've learned it since. And I still talk to my mom every day. We FaceTime each other. And of course, people ask me, so do you, does she speak English? Well, not with me. And she does a little bit with my kids, but it's not great. Although she was with a friend the other day who says, man, they were trying to speak English. And my English is actually pretty good. Like, you did, you're doing all right. You and Google Translate, man, you're doing great. So now I have a real heart for kids who walk in the classrooms who, for whom this is a new language, a new culture, a new way of living, a new people to be around. And so I, yeah, I have a real heart for them. And I would love to see more done to help them get, get along and to, to integrate or to, to bring their culture to Livermore to make all of us better. And I think that's the end of my time and then some. Tara, you want to talk about educational background? No? Yes, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Tara?
Oh, sorry. Go into the educational background?
Yeah, tell us a little bit about your education.
Oh, okay. So I highlighted it a little bit in my bio. So my education was, well, I thought I was going to be a pharmacist. So I started in pharmacy, quickly learned that that was a hard pass, but fell in love with the intersection of economics and political science. So hence the double major. Part of that education was really drilling into public finance, public policy, how things are funded at the government level, how different levels of government has evolved, right, through our history? We are very arrogant at times about our country, but I think we're all aware that we're pretty young, right? So that, that's what a lot of my education was, just learning about the evolution of the United States, how all the pieces came together, and then also how to execute on the public finance piece, how to build things, right, like all of the infrastructure, et cetera. So that was my undergrad. But then when I went to work in finance, I realized that I needed to polish off on the finance piece, which is why I got my MBA. And then as part of my work in finance, I really worked very broadly under the CFO in the first seven years of my career, where I did most jobs under the controller. I was everywhere from treasury to financial planning and analysis to credit card management, to corporate travel. So accounts payable, accounts receivable, et cetera. So I really have a broad knowledge of financial operations that it takes to run an organization.
Great. Okay. I, I don't know if you mentioned this, but what school or district committees have you served on? I know that your little ones are barely new, so.
Yes. So again, I haven't served formally on any of the committees, but in my older's first grade year, I worked very closely with the teachers and the administrators to facilitate pathways to resources to support him given his needs at the time and for the next few years. So really dug in that way. And I also spend a lot of time talking to the other parents at Junction. Junction's unique within the district with the dual immersion program to really understand what challenges are more broadly felt by that student base.
Hey. First, did we get your educational background? You're muted.
I did that on purpose. I didn't want Tara to be the only one. You're welcome. I attended school in the Netherlands and I'm, you know, looking back now in the 1970s, there wasn't a lot of help for students with, with ADHD. And so I ended up really struggling elementary school. I had some teachers that really enjoyed me and enjoyed my humor. There's others who were very, it was much harder. So one, my fifth grade class, fourth, fourth or the sixth, I think it was, they built a plywood box on my desk, you know, like a, like a voting booth, so that I would be sitting there and just have my own little world. Of course, I couldn't see the blackboard or the whiteboard or any other students, but I created my own little world. Because, you know, I was hilarious in the class. The teacher didn't think so. And so that was the only recourse they had as educators to try to still allow me to get through the materials and stuff. It was, that was rough. And junior high, high school was rough. I crammed my four years of high school into five. I was held back as a sophomore. And it really wasn't until the college years that I started getting involved in things that I really enjoy doing and learning. I met some people in California when I was there for the internship for my college sophomore, after sophomore year internship, that told me about a school in Virginia that was giving a full scholarship to every first student from each country. And lo and behold, they'd never had anybody from the Netherlands. So I said, I want that. So I got a full ride scholarship to a school that I really loved. It's Liberty University in Virginia, which has become in the years since, especially the last 10 years, a pretty I'm going to be as charitable as possible, problematic school, the way that they set loose upon the world, people who are very Christian nationalists. They want to impose that on, on people in the, in the world. And I am not like that. I like living in a pluralistic society where everybody has an opportunity to believe what they believe and to follow who they follow and to worship who they worship. So I'm not, I'm not a fan of that. So it's hard for people to ask me that. Hey, what's your educational background? And I go, do I have to go there? Do I have to go there? But I had a fantastic education with fantastic teachers that were there for the same reason as, you know, our teachers in the district that do love students and love education. So as far as my involvement here in the schools, I started at a Royal Seiko as a kindergarten dad. Is that what they call them? I don't know what they call me. They just made me fold things and cut things and wipe things. That was, I think, Thursday mornings for the year. And then after that, I got involved, or maybe at the same time, the school side council at East Avenue Schoolset Council at LHS. And I became the PTSA president at Livermore High School and on the PCS, PCIC. And was asked to get involved in the reopening task force where the nurses explained plan number 482. It was just kept going. Oh, my gosh, I felt so bad for them. They came up with new plans that reopen our schools every, every week or every other week. So I've been super involved and I still have, have two children who graduated from Livermore High School. And I still have one sophomore currently enrolled at Livermore High. And my wife is a special ed teacher at Livermore High School and loves her job, loves her role, loves her team. So that's kind of my, my background.
All right. Thank you. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with Christian on this one. What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
Good question. I think the primary, as I'm learning this quickly, yeah, I'm not afraid to tell you that there's things I'm very much in the dark on. But in the, in the governance of, of a board of education, the board has one employee and that is the superintendent. And she has her cabinet and her staff, her principals and assistant principals, everybody who work for her. And so it's our job to hold the superintendent's feet to the fire, to approve budgets, to ask the questions, to be also listening here, I think, to the community. I want to be that. I run into a lot of people who feel a little bit unheard, a little bit unseen and fight for very fiscally, fiscally responsible and data-driven governance that, that, that we follow the data, which is not always comfortable, what we, what we learn about our, our system or the way that we operate. So it's important to let the superintendent do her job and then also get involved when, when need be, since we are all responsible for having every student achieve in our district.
Okay, Tara, same question.
Hmm. So I would echo a lot of what Christian said. I, I do think that being a superintendent can be a very lonely job, right? From the perspective that they're sitting at the top. Livermore has many schools at different levels, many personalities at the principal, vice principal level, even within her cabinet, right? So I think the board can also operate as a safe space for that superintendent to explore different ideas. You know, brainstorm when solutions are coming up. The best solutions anywhere, society, organizations, grassroots organizations, companies rarely come from a single human, right? That's just not the nature of humans. We're meant to collaborate, except probably for a few certain individuals who believe that that is not the case. But from the superintendent's perspective, right? That's what the board workshops are there for. That's what the board exists for, for her to have a safe, safe space to go talk about issues, talk about different solutions, and also have a diverse board, right? People coming from all different walks of life, all different areas of expertise, different experiences as parents. I also do think the board exists to be a conduit between the community and the administrators, right, in certain areas. Is the superintendent going to be able to answer emails from every single parent? Absolutely not. But the board can be their eyes and ears out in the community, facilitating conversations. To a certain extent, some people are not even looking for a solution. They just want to be heard, right? So being those empathetic ears out in the community. And I think the last thing I would say on that is keeping the focus on the children, right? So a lot of things happen, a lot of things in a school district really have nothing to do with like the actual education being given in the classrooms, right, facilities, reopening the schools, not that that didn't have to do with education, but it had a huge administrative burden on the district, right? How to facilitate it? So also bringing it all back to like, how do we, how do we make the best experience for our kids? How do we get them the best opportunities? How do we spend the money so the broadest amount of students are impacted by that money? I think those are all things that need to swirl between the board and the superintendent to work it out in such a way that we are doing the best we can to improve the quality of the many versus just a few, right? So in general, I mean, quality of the parents' experience, quality of the community's experience, et cetera.
Okay, um, Christian. There, there is a hot button issue happening in the district right now. Um, there are rumors that the drama program or perhaps even part of the music program at LHS is dying because of scheduling conflicts with the new semester schedules. Um, the details are kind of unclear at this point, but what is clear is that a group of LHS students are very, very upset and have written a letter and I, I believe passed around a petition. And they will no doubt be taking their petition to the board. How should or should the board address this situation with the students?
I'm not going to say how, but I do say yes, they need to address the situation. I think this is a direct result of some really well-intentioned policy change that is meant to bolster students' mental health, physical health, emotional health. And the consequences to this schedule change and this policy to have zero periods eliminated has some unintended consequences that packs into a specific group of people over others. And that's, that's something that needs to be addressed. Because if we are a student body or a district that says that we are, we champion every group of students, especially those who are on the margins, then our policy, we have to make sure that our policy in, in execution also shows that. And right now it does the opposite. So I think the reason why I don't want to give solutions or wouldn't want to really comment specifically, I have a daughter in, in jazz band that's being gutted currently to where it probably will not be there next year. So I'm emotionally involved and that, so that's why it's really important that I keep my mouth shut a little bit. And I'm really excited to see the superintendent come out with a communication earlier today, really getting ahead of the issue and saying, we're here to, we're going to sit around the table. We're going to hammer this out because our value is to strengthen the arts department and not to hurt it. So I'm cautiously optimistic, Joanne. We got this.
Tara. Same question to you. Should or how should the board respond to these students when they come to a meeting and, and demand certain things?
Yeah, I think it echoes back to my previous answer. So I myself, huge theater nerd, right? I don't perform. I'm a consumer of the theater in a big way. Like I have probably seen over 100 Broadway productions in my life, local theater at every level. We live in a very rich area for children's theaters, et cetera, and amateur theater, even in Livermore, right? Like how many shows can we see at the bankhead over the course of a year? So all that being said, resources are not infinite, right? An allocation of resources is always going to be a conversation at the school board level, and this is no different. If it truly is a resource issue, right, then we figure it out on that level. But I think that Dr. Gibson has done a very important first step in that she notified parents, families of the district as soon as possible that she hears them. She's watching the conversation and she's going to dig deeper into it. And I have no doubt that she is going to be communicating with the board as she, as she makes those moves as well, right? So I think it's a holistic conversation between the superintendent and the board. As far as the students with their petition, good for them, right? So seeing the students advocate for themselves is a wonderful thing to see because we so often don't see it, right? And it's happening on social media now, but they're actually taking action and coming to the school board meeting. And I applaud that all the time. I think they, I think students should be invested in their experience. And I'm hearing a lot of numbers being thrown around on who signed the petition, et cetera. But I know it's a lot and I know it's more than just the kids plus their parents, right? Which is also great to see because it's a community-based effort. So I think they will be heard at the board level. Of course, the way the board is structured, there's no debate happening at the school board meetings, right? Just the commentary, but it's an important piece of it. It's an important piece for them to be heard.
Thank you. Okay, I am now going to turn the questioning over to Kate Sorrell.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kate Sorrell. I taught at Livermore High for over 20 years. My children all went to Livermore schools. I was the president of the Livermore Education Association for four years and then I retired, but I'm still in love with LVJUSD. So here, here's my question for you. I'm going to start with Tara. What do you believe to be the strengths of our school district? And what things would you look to improve?
Um, so I think we're seeing it in action right now, right? The biggest strength that I see both as a parent at Junction, somebody who lives close to the downtown and now with the theater department, is the community that surrounds the school district. We are a big school district, right, comparative to what I grew up in. I grew up, I graduated in a class of 138 kids, right? And that is probably what, one third of the LHS class? And then we have a whole nother high school on top of it. So we have a lot of people in the school district, but when you walk the halls of Junction, it is truly like family. When you go to the football games, it's truly like family. When you go to the soccer games, when you go to the theater productions, et cetera. And to see the parents rally around their kids and defend their kids is really heartening. I also think the strength in the districts is the teachers operate that way with the parent, with the parent groups at the schools, right? I see a lot of collaboration at the junction level and I'm told of the same collaboration being echoed at the other schools. As far as things to improve, right, some of that is a symptom of us being a larger district. I would like to see a little more transparency between district level, school site level, parents and students. And I know some people interpret the word transparency in a negative light, right? That means that somebody is hiding something, but I don't think it needs to be negative. I think it needs to reflect that the same story is being told about the situation, regardless of whom you speak to in the district, right? That the school, the school sites truly understand the district programs, the districts understand what the school is doing, and some of that's just time, right? And giving people the capacity to be able to do that. So that's one of my main focuses for my platform.
Okay, Christian, same question. What are the strengths and what could be improved?
Same as Tara. Thank you. Next question. No, I, I love that Tara. That was really, really good. I think a lot of our strength is in our diversity. When you look at the numbers of, of our students who speak a different language than English at home, if you look at the number of students who have people in their home that are foreign born, I think it is one of the coolest things. Next door to me is a Russian Ukrainian couple. Next door to, on the other side is a Chinese couple. Next to them is an Indian couple. Across the street was our Afghans, one of whom is from Amsterdam. So we talk in Dutch, which is super cool. And then the other people, kitty corner for me, I speak ASL only because they're a deaf couple. I mean, it is just the coolest thing in our diversity is what, what makes it strong. And I think we want to make sure that we do allow for all of that to be a part of our, of our community. As PTSA president, it was super fun to support kind of a Bollywood event. My first year, of course, then we went into lockdown for the second year. But man, to, to, to see that and to, to learn from one another is, is just a real strength. I think that the trust, Tara, I agree with the transparency thing, but I also see that there's so much. There's, there's quite a bit of trust between, like there's some sort of, like I think we can figure this out. And the reason why I know that is because people feel really comfortable speaking up. So they're not tired of like, well, that's not going to go anywhere anyways. We can't trust anybody. People do speak up and I speak out and I really like that. So they're not tired of like, well, that's not going to go anywhere anyways. You can't trust anybody. People do speak up and I speak out and I really like that a lot. What would I look to improve? Um, I think what Tara said is really, really good. I also, I also think that I have some experience with this because we are one church in five locations. And though each location thinks that they should just do things their own way and that it doesn't affect the whole. And I see some school sites not really being willing to look at what really works well at a specific site and things that have been learned or that we learned or things that a program that was started and that's really successful and students are really improving and the scores are going up. And then another school will go, yeah, but that's, that doesn't really work for us without really collaborating. And I'd love for that autonomy to be tweaked a little bit. I like the fact that each principal and their team can be their own school, but I think, I think that there's something to have some, a little bit more synergy around us as a district. And comparing notes a little bit more. Being a principal is a super lonely job and um, I think that would, that would help a lot. So uh, I'd like for that to happen more because I know there's places where this happens, but I think that could be improved.
Yeah, I would just echo that on different levels to the shared experiences, right? Like even down to the teacher level, et cetera, that they don't need to feel like they need to recreate the wheel every single time, right? We don't need to go to boiler, boilerplate execution. That's important to let people have their own flavor. But understanding that you're not alone in the situation, I think would be huge. And also huge from a mental health perspective, right? Nobody likes feeling like they're in your box that your teacher put on your desk. That's lonely. Yeah.
Okay. Um, Kathy, you're next.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kathy Rainey. I've lived in Livermore for 31 years. I'm a retired teacher and I taught mostly in Pleasanton. I am one of five teachers in our family, so you can imagine what our family dinner conversations are like. They're slightly unbalanced. I still stay, even though my career is over. I love staying current on what's going on in education. It will always be a love of mine. And the people in Livermore who sit up on that dais and make decisions about our district is very, very important to me. I have two granddaughters in the district. So I'm all in on this election to get two really great people. We're going to shift gears to budget and I'll start with Christian. As a school board member, what would your budget priorities be?
First thing I would do, you know, Lord willing, is just to go, Tara, help me to see what I need to see. You guys, Tara's got chops when it comes to this area. Um, I have been in charge of a a budget in my, in my job as a pastor. So I had to, you know, cut things. I don't know much about. I, I, yeah, I've got a very elementary knowledge of what happens in the school budget. Um, but I would imagine that the same issues that plague other large organizations plague a district. So, um, I would say cutting things would be, for me, it would be around the contracts that are, that kind of renew each year. There are certain contracts that just keep going and I, I always love taking another look at, you know, this landscape contract or this uh, this snacks contract or this water delivery contract and going, is this still what we need? Is it still? And it takes a little bit of effort to, to keep going at that, but I would love to, to ask the superintendent, what, what, what is your regular um, visit to all these subscriptions and all these things that we have? Are they being utilized? This is the best. Are we getting our best bang for our buck in those little things? Those little things really, really add up. When it comes to increasing things, I have uh, probably a fairly ignorant view in that I feel that sometimes there are schools that just need more resources. There are schools in our district that just need more resources because they are a little bit behind for demographic reasons, for socioeconomic reasons that they are just needing a little bit more help and we as a community can manage that. We can carry that and shave a little bit out of a school that is already doing great. Um, and plus whoever PTA board that's raking in, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to help a school that just is not quite there yet. Uh, a rising tide lifts all boats. And so I feel that we need to raise that tide for all of them. Wait, that's maybe not the right analogy, but I think you understand what I'm saying.
Okay, Tara.
Yeah. So thank you, Christian. I would just like quick disclaimer. Um, I feel like everyone's going to look at Christian's endorsement or contributions list after this to see if my name is high on there for all these compliments I'm getting, but I so appreciate it. So I think Christian has very high EQ in this area, right? Which is almost as important as the IQ, right? Because nobody wants to take things away from the classroom. Nobody wants to cut programs, et cetera. But in the case of the case of the funding challenges that we're having this year, we can't say for a hundred percent that it won't be done, right? That there won't be some classroom impactful program that won't be reduced or eliminated. However, I do think that having a superintendent and an assistant superintendent coming from outside the school district is automatically going to give us a lift in the budget area because they have fresh ideas, different perspectives, et cetera. They've seen. Um, and Dr. Gibson came from a rural district, right? That traditionally always does have funding challenges, et cetera. So I think that right there is going, and during the search for the superintendent, I attended the meetings. I was very vocal about the idea of fresh eyes coming into the district with fresh ideas. So that's, that's the first lift I think we're going to have in the budgeting issue, right? Fresh eyes looking to make sure the budget is as clean as it could be to start with. Then, um, the second thing, it's similar to what Christian said, is the first thing any organization does when it's going to um, have to tighten the purse strings a little bit is look across the board for anything that is truly redundant, right? Do we have programs running in two different sites? Where the utilization is not very good at one site, but it is in the other, but we replicated it just for the reason, right? Without looking at the outcome. Um, examining outcomes of programs that are happening that don't touch the classroom, right? And it could be something as simple as like Christian said, landscaping, et cetera, different contracts. Um, sometimes there's technology subscription contracts, right? Where we think this software is going to be great for grade four and we find out it's never being used, right? So it's all of those pieces and parts that could add up to significant dollars. But it just takes some time and some forensic accounting for people to go in and really dig into the numbers. And then when it comes to the programs that are that are going to impact the students, let's look at the programs that are benefiting just a very few students and understand why they're in place, right? And if necessary, those program dollars could go to programs benefiting lots of students, right? So I know we've had some key examples of that in the district in the last couple of years. Um, not highlighting the theater, the theater question going on right now because we don't know the details yet, but I know in the past two years, we've had some emotionally charged topics of this nature. So yeah, so that's just in summation. Look for the things that don't touch the kiddos at all first and see what kind of a lift we can get there. But then when you go down to the programs that are touching the children, let's look and see um, the ones touching just a few students. Stay away from the ones impacting the most vulnerable students, right? Because to that point, um, equity is a very big deal and it's often misunderstood. But it's those programs that are providing more equity in the district to have better outcomes for all students later on. Yeah.
Okay. So you both, both addressed equity when there's a little bit more pushing in the budget. But what if there were in a dream world, a windfall from the state to our schools? Give, give us an idea of your most optimistic view. What, where would you put that money? So just go to Tara and then Christian.
Yeah. So I'm going to speak from my parental chair right now as to where I would put that money is, um, the dual immersion program is a really good example, but I think any of the schools that have high ESL um, where children might be lagging a little bit from test scores in literacy, really creating resources where kids can, kids not in a special ed department, right? So I'm going to take special ed out of this discussion for right now because we do have the ability to get those kiddos resources that are one-on-one, one-on-two, one-on-three. But I think in the primary grades, kindergarten, first, second, third, right? Getting kids foundationally reading up to grade level is so important, right? And putting those resources down to those children. So the test scores um, at the different schools will rise together, right? And then if the literacy is rising up, a lot of other things are happening organically. Mental wellness is better because kids are not struggling in their class. They're doing better in the non-language arts classes, science, social studies, et cetera, because they're able to read, they're able to go find books. They want to read, et cetera. So honestly, Kathy, if I had a rainfall, it would go to that, to that base literacy foundation. And then being where we are now, a couple of years out of COVID is also putting that money towards the older kids who maybe during the COVID at homeschooling really lost out in the literacy game. Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not discounting math at all, by the way, to my audience, right? Because, um, math is also very important, but the literacy loss, um, was just, I think, more impactful during the pandemic than, than the math loss. At least what I've seen, um, in my community. So. Onto Christian.
Windfall, windfall. That's, I don't think it's ever, have you ever heard that word in school districts? A windfall? That would be amazing. I would say that, um, maybe once, uh, back in eighty-four. As a PTSA president, uh, we would have these donations come in and we'd have quite a, you know, we have a big pile of cash that we wanted to, to help um, teachers. And because I was kind of new to the whole PTSA, um, culture, I was really bothered by that. I said, wait, hold up, we're buying furniture for a classroom? What is the district doing? What, what's, what's going, isn't that? If that's necessary to teach children, why are we buying those? What, what do you mean we're buying paper or this book or what is going on? So I made it a, a, a rule and, you know, together with the other people on the, on the board. So let's first, and every purchase that we do for teachers, let's first go to the district and to their, um, uh, resource, you know, what do you call that? Where the, the, the purchasing desk, whatever, say, where, why are these teachers not getting, are they not being requested that? Is that something that we've cut or is that, you know, how, how does this work before we give them? So I would resource the teachers. Uh, I think each one of the teachers has a list of items that they're not able to get and have to pay for out of, out of pocket. My wife just did a GoFundMe or you know, an Amazon wishlist where all of her friends bought, um, activities for the classroom and, and things that she needed to have a successful ninety minutes with her students every, um, every day. Um, and then, uh, to, to reiterate what I said earlier, with a windfall, we're going to look at the most marginalized groups and get them up to speed. Uh, if we want to help them, if we want to help our whole community do well, we need to make sure that each kid walks out of there knowing how to add things up, knowing how to read and speak. And, 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 and write correctly. I think that's super important. Um, COVID during COVID, the rigor in all of our schools and all of the grades has been for, for all the right reasons. We just dialed it down. Um, but currently there are still students who are not measuring up and there's too many teachers. It's hard because I love teachers, but there's too many teachers who get, so say, I don't have other, any other recourse but to just pass a kid. I know they don't, can't find the United States on a globe, but you know, what are you going to do? You're passing topography. No, that's, no, we need to help you, um, to help students do better. So I would just put it towards, um, education. Maybe, uh, we need to hire certain teachers. Maybe we need to up the, the, what's expected from teachers by also reimbursing them correctly. Um, after school care, whatever is needed to help our kids do better academically would be my, uh, my first guess, my first goal, my first priority, first wish.
Great. Okay, we're going to move on to Kate, who's going to ask the next question.
Okay. So I'm going to follow up with you, uh, Christian, since you talked about achievement gaps. What suggestions do you have to address the achievement gap with regard to English learners, African-American students and students that are considered the socio-economically disadvantaged?
There are very, very smart people in. Is my audio working okay? I had a little crazy thing. Um, there's very, very smart people, um, in our district and outside of our district. Uh, here in California and even beyond who have already invented this wheel. And there are serious, um, case studies and best practices that we can follow to say, let's just really follow that, that data and that information and do what they do. We are not that unique in Livermore. We are very unique. We're, we're a very unique district. With very unique needs. However, there's also districts around the area and around the country who have been able to tackle this correctly. So I'd say, let's go, let's find out, do, you know, get the information and copy some of that, duplicate some of that, or have them come in and consult with us. But there, this is not a difficult thing to do, or this is not an impossible thing to do. Maybe it's difficult, maybe it's hard because of, of the cost, both in time, effort and money and resources. But this is not impossible and it's, and let, let's just follow others who've gone before us. This is not unique to us.
Was muted.
Yeah, so go ahead.
Tara, you're next.
Um, first, I would say, don't disagree with anything Christian said, right? Why reinvent the wheel when we can just borrow somebody's and then customize it to fit us, right? So let's go do that. But also I think we would need a unique way to suss out the impacted individuals, right? I don't think test scores are enough to develop the solution plan. I do think we need teachers to, so one of my frustrations about a parent is, um, you know, my older is in sports. I spend a lot of time standing around with parents at different things, right? Practices, games, et cetera. And there's this like running conversation that I'm sending my child to X school because their scores are the highest, right? In this, that, or something else. And to me, the test score is yes, very important, but they need to be contextualized with the needs of that particular child, right? Like just sending a child to a school with high state, um, standardized testing test scores doesn't mean that A, your child's going to love it. B, they're going to get the same experience because they might have different needs, right? So first I think there needs to be a methodology to determine for the marginalized groups, what, what really is the thing missing for them, right? Is it the way the information is being presented? Is it, you know, there's a huge discussion in education about students who succeed at much higher levels with auditory learning, right? For, for, um, subjects like social studies and science, et cetera, that reading from the book doesn't do it for them. But when they're listening to it, they are processing, retaining and comprehending at way higher levels, right? So I think the methodologies need to change in order to judge what the students need. And then once we understand that, figure out the methodologies to get them to close the gap, right? In the different groups, um, one of the things that I am just horrified about in 2024. One of the things that I am just horrified about in twenty twenty-four, to Christian's point about advancing students, is we still have way too high of a percentage, both in California and nationally, of students graduating high school and being academically illiterate, right? Literally, they test at an illiterate level, but they have a high school diploma. So how can we expect those children to go out into the world and succeed, right? So, yeah, I think we need to be able to identify the groups, problem solve for how to get them to the next level and then implement that. We don't need to develop it from the ground up, but we do need to customize it to our students, our district, our teachers.
And I would add to that, Tara. I, I love your perspective on that. It's, it's kind of a mental health issue, because if you, if you only, if, if we only put worth and value on a child based on their test, test scores, easy for me to say. It is just, yeah, it, it, it's not helpful. I did not have good grades. I did not succeed in school. And so it was really, really, really difficult. So to get every student to whatever achievement looks like for them and their potential, if we can help every kid to get to their full potential, man, what a mental health boost that would be for each student.
Yeah, and, and it goes beyond, it goes beyond graduation, right? Presenting these kids at eighth, ninth grade with different pathways past graduation. Not every child is bound for a four-year college. They shouldn't be because that's not where their aptitude lies. That's not where their passion lies, right? Let them go into the trades. Let them go to the community college and explore. Let them just go travel or just work for a year, right? Not every eighteen-year-old needs to move into a dorm in August and kick off a college career, right? In order to be successful. And can I just say, after watching on social media all my friends' kids move into dorm rooms, some of them still look like little prison cells and I find that conserv- concerning from a national level, right? Like, once they're decorated, they look okay, but they still smack too much of like institutionalized, tiny box living that I find disturbing. And I would like somebody to do something about that, too.
Okay, I think it's up to Joanne to bring us home.
Okay, for our final question, not sure who I should give this to first, Tara, I guess. What unique perspective would you bring to the school board?
So I don't think me having young kids is unique, right? So there's a lot of people out there that could run for the school board and do that. But it does speak to commitment, right? That I'm concerned about the longevity of the school district, future roadmap, et cetera. So definitely prudent from the perspective of planning for the future. But I really think it's my financial management slash organizational management chops that's really going to bring a different perspective to the items already on the agenda for the school board, right? The normal course of running business, special projects coming in, if we do a bond in the future. Well, I should say, when we do a bond in the future, right? We know they're coming down, coming down the pipe, finishing up the bond, you know, that's already passed. Really looking at the, the fiscal health of the school district, right? Making sure we have reserves, making sure that we're planning for future enrollment. And or in the case, right, we're, we're forecasting lower enrollment at the younger grades, which is affecting our funding. I would also like to play a role in educating the public in a consumable way on how the school district is truly funded. If you stopped the average parent on the street and asked them if they understand how the school district is funded, I think we'd get a lot of blank stares, right? Unless it was somebody who deeply goes in to, I mean, yes, we get, we get a certain amount per child and everybody kind of knows, like, if your kid's absent too much, like, the school loses money because the school talks about that a lot. But I think if they looked at, you know, in the last six months, I, I went into a deep rabbit hole and there's all these statewide grants that are out there and funding for different classifications of students, right? In all different areas. So I think creating a simplified, one-page PowerPoint-type slide that just helps parents, community members understand how the school district is funded, how the big projects get created and funded, et cetera, like the matching funds rule, et cetera. There's just a lot of that, that, that is completely, completely not part of people's understanding that I would like to help with, right? I'm talking like crayons and butcher paper. Help them, help them understand where their money is going.
Christian?
That's, that's, that's awesome. I love that. I think you're totally right. Like, if you asked me how is the school funded, I'd be going, well, here's what I know. And it'd be partially true. I think that, well, you know, I'm definitely not normal as a person, so I bring that to the board. I bring, I, I bring some, some levity all while really looking at the heart of, how do we get to the most, have a most positive and collaborative environment and culture for our students to succeed and to thrive? And it takes all of us to do that. And so, so my, my slogan for the, for the, for the campaign is every student, every potential. Because I, I believe that, that every, every one of our students deserves a safe, inclusive, empowering learning environment. So, and I think that, that I, I love what the board has been doing. And I think that I would, I would want to continue that to go with this evidence-based way to make decisions, making sure that policies are really driven by what's really true and would really benefits our kids instead of, instead of just these anecdotes that come from the community. But I'm also, I'm just really interested in making sure that every student feels and is valued and prepared for success. This world is changing super fast. And so we have to be, stay ahead of all of that. And, and then I would say to all the, everybody that I talk to, like, this isn't just about me, it's about us. I think it's really important that we, as a, and Christie Wong has done that really well. Really being out there to hear what matters to the community and then work together to create that, that best future for our students. So that's what I bring. I bring a lot of heart. I bring a lot of experience. I bring a lot of parenting and a lot of working with students and with people all throughout these last thirty years to get to the best next step, next future for our community.
Tara, did, Tara, did you raise your hand?
That was an accident.
Okay. Well, I think we have reached the end of our prepared questions. I want to thank both of our candidates for being with us this afternoon. Before I go further, I realized that I didn't introduce myself when I started the questioning. I just jumped right in. I'm Joanne Morrison and I'm a member of the Steering Committee of Livermore Advocates for Public Education. I've been involved with school district issues for about seven years or so when Livermore Indivisible first became involved. And I've been on the Student Health and Wellness Committee for the district for almost as long. I am also a surrogate grandmother to three children, one of whom graduated from Granada. One of whom is still at Granada. He's a sophomore. And one of whom is in middle school at Joe Mitchell. Each one of them has a different learning challenge. So I've been deeply involved with their education. English is the second language for their family. And so I've done what I can to tutor the kids, help them with their schoolwork, and I've attended all of their IEP meetings to have a better understanding of what their needs are and, and what I can give them. So I come to this with that kind of perspective. I wanna, I wanna say that I really appreciate these two candidates. I think they are stellar. I, I don't think anybody could do any better than to vote for both of these candidates for school board. And I have put their website links in the chat. I hope that if you have some more questions, or even if you don't have some more questions, that you'll visit their website. I hope that you will find ways to support their candidacy, either with volunteering or a donation or any way that you can help. We really need to support these two wonderful candidates. And Kathy has her hand up, so Kathy.
Yeah, I, I want to apologize to Tara. I, I called you Tara, I believe. And I apologize for that. And a friend reminded me that it's Tara, correct? So it rhymes, it, it rhymes with Sarah. Can we, that will help me remember.
So on the East Coast, it's default Tara. On the West Coast, people start with Tara and then, yeah.
I apologize as well, Tara.
It's so funny that I'm, I'm usually the one whose names get butchered and you, none of you did. That was really amazing. Way to go.
We've been practicing, Christian.
Okay, good job, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to end this session, say good afternoon and thanks to all of our attendees. We really appreciate your interest. This is gonna be a very exciting board campaign. And I hope that everybody is gonna roll up their sleeves and get involved. It, it's really worth it. Thank you.